Thank you very much. It's a great way to start planning session and everyone I hope is nice and relaxed on this very beautiful spring afternoon. What I'd like to do before I have Dr. Cordero talk a little bit about how we're gonna organize today is to have the seat clerk, Mr. Martinez, call the role, please.
Mayor Flynn.
Here.
Mayor Pena.
Here.
One of my jobs is I'm in charge of the Business School, Martin B. Smith School of Business and Economics. I'm sure some of you knew about this. I've had the pleasure of meeting these four partners. And we, part of the reason I'm doing this is that we're at University of New Washington, Dr. Washington President. We try to be out of the community and we try to participate in the community. If you haven't been at the university, it's a beautiful place. When I got the job, I didn't know about it. I was at Cal State LA for 13 years and then I was one of the original 13 to start in '01. So my area is strategic planning. My background is I worked for, I got my MBA from USC a long time ago and worked for Atlanta Bridgeville and then spent with Peter Drucker, famous man in management. I've been in academics since '80s. My area is strategic planning. I'm gonna talk a little bit about strategic planning to set the stage here. Everybody's got a strategic plan because what a strategic plan is, it's just an allocation of resources, okay? So it comes down eventually to the budget. But one of the most important things, when I asked, I met each one of these individual entries of some law, I can't talk them all once until today, and they gave me this document that's called a strategic plan, well it really wasn't. You get 19 items on it. It might be a budget plan, it might be something like that, but there's, a strategic plan only concentrates on a few things, kinda like crows, humans can only count to three. So we're gonna force, I'm gonna force them to come down to a few priorities. You know, there's a saying that managers, maybe city council people, maybe whoever, doesn't do anything important. They only do the things that are extremely important because after all, isn't everything important? But we know that we can't focus on 19 items or 10 items or whatever. We have to do many things, but strategy is a exercise, strategic planning is an exercise in trying to focus our resources on what's ultimately important. So I know already that public safety, because I've heard originally like 60% of the money here goes to police and fire.
Seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five, whatever. Somebody's made a judgment as a group, we live in a democracy, that those things are important. So that's somebody's strategic planning. One of the problems with strategic plans, by the way, is we write a lot of stuff down on paper and then we do something else. So then people say, well, what's that whole planning thing about? What we try to do, and it's easy to say in any kind of group, is to have the strategy, what is, what are our key activities, match up with the money and match up with a thing we call tactics. Tactics is how do we do it? You know, most of the time we spend on the how. How do we do it? We need to do this, we need to do that, whatever. And of course, it's easy to talk about. I need four of those and I need three more of those and maybe should add more. But we need to step back and say, well, why are we doing it? The purpose of a meeting like this, stop and say, these are your elected officials, it's your city, it's your plan, I'm just here. I've already told them that if it's, if I can't control a meeting, if you will, you don't need me. It's just a regular council meeting. You go about your business. I hope I can help control a meeting in the sense of saying, okay, enough talking about that, let's move on to something else. That's why I'm gonna write some stuff down here. At the end of the day, what I'd like this to end up with, we're gonna end at seven, I hope, is a list of a few things that they think are the most important for the city, the most important. And then I would expect if I came back in a year or two, that I would see that's where the money went. That's where the money went. You gotta be careful in strategic planning that frankly isn't a waste of time. I had a guy that I used to work with said, you know, you drink your own bath water. So we all here just start talking about the things that we all know and nothing really comes about it. Why didn't we have this meeting? Then we, or we ended up at the same place. But I find that these meetings are useful in focusing people's thinking, hearing other points of view. Probably not gonna change other points of view. This isn't a debate. My job is, a council can have a debate. My job is just to lead a discussion so we end up with a few key things. I hope to end up with three or four what I would call strategic initiatives. We wanna focus the future of the city in the next two years. That doesn't mean you're not gonna do all those other things. Of course you are. But you don't need me here to help you with that discussion. We meet every week as a council. So here's how I'm gonna do it. I'm going to write some things down. I'm gonna ask, kind of a classic and some of you have been through this before, what we call SWAT analysis. Springs reefers up to is interest. I'm gonna ask their opinion of what state of the city it is at the moment. I happen to live in Camarillo, I don't want campus. I know this place, I've come here many times, but it's not my city. So I wanna hear the SWAT analysis. From the SWAT analysis, we'll go through to probably a brief discussion of what we call stakeholder analysis. You guys are all stakeholders. Stakeholders means you have some interest in the organization. And then in the last hour or two, we will go towards what are the key priorities. There's lots of names you can call them, you know, key initiatives, key priorities, one of the things we should focus on. And the last note I wrote to myself here is to warn them. I'll pull them out of the detail. If I think that they're getting into too much detail, I'm not interested in that either. I'm only here for a few hours. My job is to help them get the top one, okay? So that's it.
I'll banter a new evening. My name is Margaret Rodriguez. I happen to live in Oxnard and happen to be very pleased that you started this session with art. And I like to speak about the arts. I realize that not a great likelihood that the arts will become one of the three key city initiatives because there's so many competing needs. But I would like to ask you, please, keep the arts up there. I thank you for creating the Arts Committee from the city council and I appreciate the PAC, but I'm the director of the Academy of Latin Music. We cannot use the PAC. Neither can the elite theater company. Small community theaters need a smaller venue. When the youngsters who staffed the arts reaction, which was a youth oriented arts group, needed a place to hang out or put their art supplies, there was nothing in PAC that could have supported that effort. So my request is that you put the arts, performing arts, graphic arts, all of them, on the agenda as was pointed out by the initial speaker. The arts boost the financial liability of the city, but they do more than that. They inspire us, they make quality of life so much better. I'll be going to the concert for tomorrow, what is today? Well, Friday night. And it boosts, it gave me, it gave me a good feeling to know that that is the best thing in the New West Assembly. So please, consider a little place for the arts and the money that needs to go in. My dream is a cultural center, maybe on the same ground as the Performing Arts Center, that can be a home to community theater, artists, youth groups that do art. That's my dream. So I ask you to consider the arts as a key city initiative. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Me, Martin Jones, to be followed by Theodora Gannon-Courtin.
Good afternoon, council. My name is John Johnson. I live in Oxnard. I lived in Oxford in 1906. I was reminded last, last night in fact, that I've been at this since at least 1998. I didn't realize it was that old. My concern is about tax. One egregious example of misspending tax money is 13 million dollar.
This on Spanish speakers and Richeche speakers who work in our fields, who help to grow our own food so that we have something to eat when we go home for dinner tonight. So I just wanna remind everyone to please remember them in your prayers and say thank you for their labor. And my real reason for lifting this up for you is to say that we have some wonderful farm worker housing that's been provided by the city of Oxnard. It is not nearly enough because I don't know if you know the numbers, but even with the new wagon wheel groundbreaking of 1,500 units, we still are far short of what the city needs to house our farm workers. So I wanna make certain that everyone knows that I'm not alone in this work. I work with the interfaith community. I invite anyone who's interested in coming to a lunch shift tomorrow at, I should start actually with the breakfast because tomorrow is the first Wednesday and we have our House Farm Worker Meeting every first Wednesday at eight o'clock at Cafe Tomas. You can start the day there with us. Then we graduate to noon. We meet, I meet with a lot of the same people, but more open, at the interfaith organization that meets at All Saints Church and the Episcopal Church at the corner of Second, or is that Third? I think it's Second. And C Street. I've only lived here five years so I'm still getting all of this sort of network. I also work with CLU Ventura County, that's clergy and lay united for economic justice. You don't pronounce the J. But you do have a wonderful group of people I serve on the advisory board. It's lay people and our J people and the focus of CLU Ventura County is largely the Spanish speakers that I mentioned and Richeche speakers. One of the other organizations that I've worked closely with is.
Is it me?
Uh, is that it?
Is it me?
Oh, thank you. I have worked very closely with RICOP, which is the Richeche indigenous community organizing project. They have wonderful work. They do their upstairs over the La Eramanda on Fifth Street in downtown Oxnard. So I invite everyone to be in touch with me. I'm easily located. If you just Google my name, you'll find the contact information. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And the next people will be Dr. Don Tebow, to be followed by Lucy Abdeghi.
We have to do it because we are the fifth largest city in the state of California. It's only right that we prioritize and utilize our money for our youth because they are our future. And we have to provide jobs for them. I mean, the job takes care of the three evils. Takes care of the boredom, the vice, and the need. So let's take care of our city and start with the youth, start with the parents, start putting shops and resources and start getting them young. We do have this awesome program, but unfortunately it doesn't work. We know statistically prisons build, they start their survey by prisons at third grade. That's how they figure out how they're gonna build a prison, by the third grade cheat. How the third grader is doing, that's how they figure out how much they're gonna build a prison for. We need to stop that. We need to stop that because our third graders should not be the next prison. Our third grader should be our next mayor. So that's, that's where I'm here to talk to that. How can we take that? What is it we need to do? And I hope you really, really consider that. That's a huge part, 75%. Thank you.
Hello, kids. I'm speaking for Jim Hensley. He's had a heart attack, you know, he just went and bypassed. So we asked you to kind of speak out about the water, water pooping children for the Colonia. We know that that's a huge priority. Most of our children here in Oxnard do not swim, which is really sad. Natural reasons and because we don't have the resources. We've been asking for another pool in South Oxnard for a very long time. We know he has a priority in La Colonia to start being able to have different grants and resources available for our children. So we want that to be also a big part of it. Where are you guys need to take the money?
The last guest to be followed by Paul Felix.
I didn't wanna, um, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I didn't wanna comment on Jim Hensley's idea, but I shall. His is an idea that hasn't borne fruit. What we're doing at the cafe is we put over 350 youth and their families in water. We're very limited public access water. We've gotten zero from the city of Oxnard. Please, we have this incredible seaside community. We need to invest in our youth so that we can then make the water safe and then be ambassadors of environmental conservation. That's how we do it. About 100 years ago, when the city of Oxnard was first founded, I bet you that public safety was fire and police. Today, this meeting with a good club also talked about public safety as the cops and the fire department. It's a complete and total disconnect from reality. What was happening 100 years ago is not happening today. And we still have the same paradigm. And we're spending about 80 million dollars. Back in the day, I believe it was common sense, we weren't there. But today, much of public safety is driven by fear. I wanna throw up some words that 100 years ago weren't around. Gangs, perhaps, predators, super predators. The infamous injunctions, three strikes. And then we got creative with the intellectuals and we started coming up with restorative justice, intervention, prevention, nonsensical silly little words that have nothing to do with restoring a kid if you don't have love, common sense and practicality and a committed pipe community. The mayor sent roughly 80 million dollars right now, roughly, is going to public safety. Very, very little in the way of that money is going to what we call nurturing long-term unconditional love programs. I wanna tell you that despite the lack of support, tomorrow, the Keys Leadership Academy and the CAPANA will start a program with some of most at-risk youth in the community, ages 16 to 19. All probation referred and we're gonna be working with them without the assistance of the city of Oxnard. I beg you, please look at your paradigm. Change the notion of what public safety is. Public safety is love, good education, nutrition, health, welfare, and of course, the arts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next people will be Paul Felix, to be followed.
We need, there's no facilities for swimming. The swimming pools at the high schools, they're for the high schools. The public act is natural. And we need to teach our children how to swim. It's work reached community. We have 11 miles worth of beaches and no lifeguards. It's insane. Another reason why I'm here is we need to have striking on the streets where the islands are living because our streets are not straight and they're poorly lit. And you can't tell where the islands are. There's so many people have hit them with the tires. They're black. So you can't see them at night. And thirdly, one of my pet peeves is we need to have Southern California Edison that relays the streetlights to change them over to LEDs because they'll save the city 40% in electricity costs and they're just cleaner. They have, they have good light output. And you know, we could have much streetlights down movie road or other streets that are properly built. That's, that's one of the things that I, anyway, thank you very much for listening.
I came once more to talk about downtown and the time that we have lost in the last five years, all the economics that have been going on. How we need to regain momentum once more. We now have control of the Boulevard and it'd be nice to see some planning along with that. We just stopped some of the old plans that we had in the past. It starts to be looking not to beat with the theater, but also complement the park. It would be a place that we could actually start to see kids come together, adults come together, make a gay at night in downtown. It would be just so important to see the city closed off in certain parts where we have farmers markets. There's just a lot of fun that we could be doing in the downtown that we have not been able to do. And I hate to see a lot of the air taking out of the downtown because of the side of the freeway. We don't talk about it in downtown. But we would like to see that momentum start to build back up again. It just seems like we've lost a lot of it. And I'd like to start thinking, maybe start to think about how we can bring it all back again.
Thank you very much. And the next people.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for. My name is Julia Chambers. I am the executive director of Goldwing's Children's Museum. Very happy to be here today. And I come first with a thank you, actually, to the, for the Cultural Arts Grant that Goldwing's was awarded from the city. Here's one of the things that we've done in addition to a million things. So we want to hand them out to whoever we like, a wonderful brochure showcasing. So one wonderful goal that I would love to see happen, just like Vince mentioned, I gave this, Goldwing's Children's Museum on Plaza Park. Makes total sense to create Museum Road with the Carnegie and the other art center right there. I came, and I'm almost celebrating my one-year anniversary as the executive director. It's been a wonderful year and I took the job partly because I have three boys. I don't know how funny it was. But I saw something wonderful. It has been going on for 25 years. How many people have been in Goldwing's Children's? Please come if you haven't. We have been working really hard over the last year to make our wonderful 6,000 square foot space on Fourth Street shine. We have programmed, we have incredible things that we've worked really hard to do. However, if you're in a 6,000 square foot facility with no air conditioning and the sun, no matter how great your event is, people are gonna start sweating and leaking. There is other, there are other issues with our wonderful Fourth Street location, doctors parking and the smell of tear and odor patio, which we can't say we can do anything about it, no matter how much beauty we do. So we have been working so hard to reinvent ourselves, make it already a wonderful resource for Oxnard Ventura County. Anybody who wants to come visit. But it is time for a new space. And the Social Security Building has miraculously opened up on Plaza Park. How wonderful would it be to have Ventura County's Children's Museum right there as a destination? The ideas we have, I have a wonder. I imagine, great, gorgeous. I thought about a canopy on the top for a climber to come. Programming. We already have some wonderful, some wonderful exhibits that have been forward funding, such as our Oral Anatomy exhibit that's not quite open where you walk into an eight-foot mouth and use a huge toothbrush. We want to give an hanging exhibit. We wanna celebrate every aspect of Ventura County. We love the city and for all of you to be a part of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor Flynn, council members, 30 minutes has passed.
Members of the council, I have three speaker cards left. It was a desire of the council.
Right? Good. I have three simple requests. First of all, please push the cleanup of the Superfund site at the former Halico site. It's an eyesore and it's a health hazard both to the public and to the Ormond Beach Wetlands. Two, please encourage Jurgen Gramco, the owner of Southland Soft Farms, to sell his land at Ormond Beach to the people of California so that the California State Coastal Conservancy can finally begin its restoration project of the Ormond Beach Wetlands. In my view, Ormond Beach Wetlands will be the crown jewel of California's coastal wetlands and will be a haven for the over 200 species of birds who live or visit it and a magnet for the bird watchers and nature lovers who will come here to see those birds and to see our beautiful wetlands. Three, the local coastal plan has not been updated since 1988. I strongly urge you to complete the updated local coastal plan as soon as possible and please be sure to include your intentions, which you've stated publicly many times over the last several years, to decommission and remove the two power plants at Ormond Beach and Manuel A. Day. Finally, I just wanna say that the sooner, in my view, the sooner that Oxnard achieves these three goals, the closer it will be to realizing its potential as a beautiful coastal community with miles of pristine beaches and rich, complex coastal wetlands that will attract tourism from all over the world. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next people will be Miguel Espinoza.
Are residing here. These are people who go all over the world, fighting and attempting for, thank you. Now, my thought is, why don't we plan on building a sports community? No. It's amazing. But it's possible. It could happen. What we need is futuristic thinking. We need people who want to make money, not lose money. And we need people who are able to reach out to investors, planners, and all of the rigmarole that goes along with making big money. Why should Las Vegas make it off? Why should Los Angeles make it off? We sit here in an ideal place between Santa Barbara and Los Angeles and between the beautiful Pacific Ocean and Snow Camp. We need to think ahead. We need to have the guts to invest, but invest correctly, invest in a proper, maybe ventures. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kevin Turner. I'm here with my wife today. We have the we say though, Stop the Bullying and Youth School Tour, Stop the Youth Violence and School Tour. We get all the schools out here in Oxnard. Ten years, I'm a young black man out here and I know where I am. I'm from Memphis, Tennessee, with my, with my wife. We've been working hard to help these kids out here. It's a lot of bullying and youth violence. You can build a swimming pool. You can build anything you want, but what kind of kids are gonna be at those swimming pools? What kind of kids is gonna be walking your street? What kind of kids is gonna be established? These kids are having problems. We're their first. We have been working with Q104.7. They just put our commercial on in place four times a day. We're spending $750. We're spending seven hundred and fifty dollars of our own money on you guys' kids because we care about these kids. Well, we're here, first of all, again, I'd like to thank the Montreal Cultural Arts for their grant, which helped us get our school tour going. To be honest with you guys, we reach out to the city. We reach out to the officers and the chief. And we both would turn down them. Now, you got to think about it. Somebody stood up here and said, "The advocacy in jails built for twenty-three years old." Well, that's where they're heading. If you don't get on track and start working and try to help these kids get into a better place. These are smart, brilliant kids who went to the frontier. They told us, "Don't go to the frontier." Because the kid was going to throw out our food. Let us talk back to us. The kids were like mice. All they want to do is listen to somebody that understands them. Right now, the cool is us. Music plays ninety percent of what's going on. And we just happen to be positive R and B and hip-hop. We don't curse. We don't do negative things. We take these kids and we put them on the rungs. Right now, I've got gangsters out turning from gangster rap into positive rap. Everybody wants to make it in this music world. So all we want to do is, please, stand beside us. We're not asking for anything. We just want some power behind us. Just stand, all of you parents, all of you people in here. Stand beside us. If I'm a young black man and I'm out here trying to make a change, which I know is a Mexican community, then we all can make a change together. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker will be Kristen DeCasse.
Good afternoon. Good morning. Okay. Good afternoon, councilors. I'm Kristen DeCasse, the CEO for the Port of Columbia Commercial Working Board here. And just want to thank you for the opportunity to stand before you today. We really look forward as a true friend and ally and partner to the state of Oxnard. We look forward to continue to work with you. We've had some recent economic data come out which suggests that nine thousand four hundred jobs are associated with the port. Five thousand six hundred of those jobs are induced direct or indirect jobs, of which thirty-nine percent of those folks already live within the city of Oxnard. We have a billion-dollar impact on the economy. And we just want to make this statement that we stand ready to work with you to help the port continue to prosper and help the city continue to prosper. We're in the process of doing strategic action planning and also building an environmental framework. We look forward to making sure that our strategic and vision processes are...
Thank you very much. And that concludes our speaker.
Thank you for the opportunity. This is working. I think first of all, this is our first opportunity to really talk to each other. We are restricted, as everybody knows, from having a group conversation except in public. So we're finally going to have that. It's also a great opportunity to talk about what the residents want to see, the future of our city. And I'd like to take the long view and say, what kind of city do we all want to live in in ten, fifteen, twenty years? What kind of city do we want to leave to our children and grandchildren? And to do that, we have to start today to think about how we're spending our money. What are priorities for spending? What kind of environment we want to leave? What are the issues out there with our young people, with our seniors, and everybody in between? And how can we do better for the city, including instantly reinforcing a sense of trust, which has taken a bit of a beating in the last few years for reasons that are perhaps unavoidable and some are avoidable? And start afresh to look at more community participation, starting with this meeting, our community commissions. We ask people to volunteer. Many of you are here who volunteered on our commissions. And we need to really engage that process a little bit deeper. So I don't know how much longer you want me to talk, but it's going back to the basics and starting fresh with getting everybody's input and then making some decisions that might be part of our city.
Late this afternoon, we're what I believe to be in a world-class facility. And I think that a former employee of the city, Ken Ortega, had a grand vision. And today, we are experiencing this grand vision. And behind us are the beautiful Sonoma on the mountains. And to the left of us here, Ormond Beach. And I think that it wasn't by coincidence that it was recommended that we start our conversation with each other here at this point. You know, I would say to my colleagues on the council and to the people here in attendance, residents, that Oxnard is a giant. But at times, the reputation of Oxnard and even sometimes people within the city can be their own worst enemy. I think it's good to be critical. I think it's good to be constructive about criticism. But I'm hoping that today we can forge a strategy about what we want to see in the next ten to twenty, maybe if not thirty, years in Oxnard. What kind of city do we want Oxnard to be? And I would suggest humbly to my colleagues and to members of the audience and the staff that what we would like to see is a prosperous Oxnard. We would like to see prosperity all throughout the city, in every part of the city, in every neighborhood of the city. And through prosperity, the things that we all want, the bucket list, whether it's the nineteen things from last year or it's the multitude of things that have been suggested over and over again by members of the public, then the realization of that so-called bucket list will become reality. Recently, I proposed a ten-point jobs plan. I don't know if it's realistic at any point to discuss that, but I narrowed down that ten-point jobs plan to first and foremost, streets. Secondly, jobs. And thirdly, schools. And I think that if we're planning a vision, this is visionary, I think, or I hope it's visionary, and it's about strategy. And the way that we, the strategy is about how, not necessarily the details about how to get there, the tactics, as Dr. Poderro said, but how we're going to do it. And how we're going to do it is the strategy. And so I would suggest that here at this session, that prosperity and everything that will promote prosperity is going to get us the most of what there is to get with very scarce resources. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been given a lot of thought as to what I want to accomplish today. And I think that when we go to our community, and I would echo the comments of the mayor and mayor of Port Huron. We do have a community. I don't know if any of you saw the meeting last week. The former mayor of the city of Ventura was at our meeting, at our council meeting, showing a plan that he and another gentleman just worked on and had to tell us that our crime rate per capita is lower than the city of Ventura's. And I think that's phenomenal. We always talk about Oxnard being challenged in a variety of ways. But when someone from a neighboring city who tells themselves this is the same city comes in and recognizes our community for our success, I think that's phenomenal. So we need to capitalize. We continue on with that. So part of it is doing the things we've been doing right and continue to do that. Also, looking at what we're doing on all aspects of our government, our business, everything else, and see what we can do better. There's always ways that I think we can improve through self-introspection, whatever you want to call it, that there are better ways to do things and do a better thing. And finally, we really need to concentrate, and I would agree with the mayor on this, about putting our people back to work, our community back to work, our communities back to work, so on and so forth, drawing good, quality jobs here. I would prefer not to stretch that over tenure period. I'd rather do it as quickly as possible because when the community is working, the community is happy, then that has that positive benefit. I think there are a lot of issues we can look at. I look forward to the discussion. And I would agree with Dr. Poderro. The banking things are nice, but we really need to be realistic and take three or four that we can accomplish and set ourselves up for successes instead of setting ourselves up to be unable to do anything.
Hello, everyone. Thank you guys for joining us today. I just want to, from this session, I really want, we've talked about the issues and we constantly talk about the issues. We know that there's a consistency with some of the issues that are brought up by the citizens, our roads, youth outreach, community empowerment, whether it be for adults, our kids, or seniors. I think at this session, I really want to pinpoint what we can do to go ahead and resolve some of those issues immediately. I think a lot of the times, we get caught up in talking about them. At this session, I really want to get a set plan as to how we can go forward and resolve the issues with the dating of the streets. Maybe look at our budget and how we can reallocate funds to see how we can give money to youth programming and cultural activities. So forget the issue we already, we heard from the speakers during public comment. We know what the issue is on. From this session, I really want to pinpoint some strategies that we can take tomorrow and take to staff tape. This is what we need to get done within the next month, within the next year. And we need to come up with a long plan, go for that, really get a set plan and start where we can start tomorrow, implementation of this plan.
So I would use the word, I knew you used the word solve. And it sounds like it's a professor word, but I use address. We're going to address, you know, we're not going to solve anything today. But if we can address some of these issues, which is a major, would be a major step forward. So let's take a little bit of time. This is a bit of an exercise. It might seem a little artificial. But again, trying to get everybody on the same page here. It's the first time they've talked to each other about, as I heard all of those things when I was in the individual. So I'm an outsider. Someone may have pointed that. I'm a professor. So give me a sense of, and this will get pulled out some from the public, but also from you. Give me a sense of what you think the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And I'll come to threats later. And this is the fun part, frankly, of planning. You can toot our horn a little bit. You can, by the way, have the same thing on every list, you know? If, when we're doing this for the university, I say parking is a strength and parking is a weakness and parking is a threat. And location is often a strength. You have a beautiful location here, but it might be a weakness here. And I need one point of order, Mr. Mayor. Are we, I'm just dealing with the four of you. We're not, is the public going to be speaking or I'm just dealing with the four of you?
Well, the way we got it structured is you're just dealing with the four of us. And that way, that's why we have the public comment in the beginning.
So, I was hoping you'd say that. Just give me some, what are the strengths of the city, everybody?
Coastal.
By the way, the way I work is I'll take these and I'll just paste them around the wall. Eventually, I'll pull it together with a red adjustment. Coastal, what else? By the way, this exercise tells the public what your elected officials think too. What else? What's another strength? Another one? I think I'll put down employees. I've been impressed with the employees, all of you. That's an opportunity, obviously, to develop employees. Probably it's a weakness. I'm sure there's employees that don't fit up here. But obviously, a strength, I've dedicated people here in the city. I've been around for a couple of weeks. I mean, in intense meetings, I see all these people. So clearly, your employees are... I would have strengths?
Forward-thinking.
So let me ask you, who's forward-thinking? Is everybody forward-thinking or the council is forward-thinking? I'd like to say that.
And I'll start out with this facility. We're one of two, three facilities on a statewide basis that has something like this. Instead of taking water and flushing it out to sea like has been the norm for the state throughout the whole law, we're not looking to reclaim that. I think that's kind of visionary thinking. And not always everybody agrees on stuff like that. But I think part of the process of government is collaborating and getting people to see the dream and in their own way tie into that and help support them. But when you look at the amount of water that this facility fully comes online and is going to produce, it's one of the things that's going to be addressing our future needs. Water is going to really need to feature here.
So we'll put that as an opportunity. Other strengths here? What kind of participation do you have in your elections? How many people turn up for elections? Is it a good percent? Is it the state average?
It'd be a good percent.
Other strengths? So that's an opportunity. Other strengths in this place? You know, what? So I'll put that down as location.
That used to be our official slogan. City that cares, I think, still lives in people's hearts.
Who doesn't care about?
Each other, your neighbors, and the environment.
Other strengths? So I heard somebody say something about employment. We have obviously a higher unemployment rate to rely on, but we still... So there's still one strength here. What do you mean by that, economic muscle?
Well, we're, you can argue that we're the most, we have the most diverse economy. So as opposed to, say, in some communities that might rely more on just a couple of eggs in the basket, I think we have many eggs in the basket and...
What are those? You've got agriculture?
Manufacturing.
Manufacturing.
Tourism.
Tourism.
Let's see, sales.
Retail. Do you have software, you know, that kind of, besides manufacturing? Do you have service in this region?
Yes, we do, but it can be argued that we need more.
Keep that in mind. Other strengths? Why don't you guys run for office? What attracted you to the city?
I'd be sure that your city continues on it and is vibrant and survives.
So it has, it's vibrant now?
I think so. It has room for improvement, sure. When you look at how we've fared during the last four or five years, the economic downturn, and the mayor mentioned this, because of the diversification of this economy that we have, I think we've fared a lot better than Stockton, which is now going into bankruptcy, or other cities that put all of their eggs into one basket. It's a lot like making an investment in a stock market in the future. You won't throw all of the money.
So you survive.
You just survive across the board so that if one fund alters, the other ones can pick up a little bit more.
That's the diverse economy. So survive the recession. That's a good strength when you're here. Anything else? Other strengths? I said employees. What's your feeling about that? I mean, you've got, you have a strong staff.
Hardworking.
Hardworking.
A lot of pride.
Other strengths?
We do have a lot of cultural arts institutions and artists of all kind in our city.
Anything else? Okay, let's talk about some problem areas. You know, none of you said about the finances of the city itself. What's your opinion? Is that a strength?
Relative to other cities in the county, we're top end.
You have a balanced budget?
Well, with the exception of some small moraines, yes.
We have a more secure pension system for public safety than other cities because of some forward-thinking that was done decades ago.
How high is it?
Officially, about twelve percent.
Education, you're talking about. Education, you're talking about high school dropout rate?
That, and just...
Achieving task kind of...
Right, very challenged, yes. Or challenging and challenged.
What was the other thing you said?
A per capita income that's too low.
We're into infrastructure, so things such as parks, community centers, you know, a place where small theater groups can go and perform, such as a basic, basic everyday park.
Is that an issue? Bridges, bridges, I mean bridges.
Well, in terms of, and I was going to say self-sufficiency, and in terms of, I, you know, we have to be realistic. We live on, on one of the biggest faults in, in the United States, and one of the poor plays, I, if I got my numbers right, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, we're going to suffer a huge calamity, and are we self-sufficient enough to be able to maintain ourselves through that and survive? You know, we talked about mutual aid and everything else, but when it comes, and it may not be easy during my lifetime, I, I don't know, but I want to make sure my city is prepared to deal with that, and be able to take care of itself, not have to rely on outside resources. So, is that, that discussion, because when we look at the Walton Theater Faults in the northern area, the Northwood Fault in the LA area, generally the first things to think of that were bridges, and we're very dependent on bridges into and out of our community, and we need to be prepared for that, that possibility.
Other weaknesses?
I know there's a few big entities that are financially, and state, at this point, we have to provide subsidies for them to function on their own, so, you know, just , I believe there's a few.
Like?
There's the golf course, the OPAC, the theater, the, the big, I mean, the establishments that we as a city have to help out financially so that they can maintain themselves.
So you're subsidizing certain activities now?
That's...
So you're, give me, so you said theater?
Golf course and performing arts center.
I heard somebody in the audience say that they wanted a performing arts center. They have it organized?
The, that's the one that...
Okay.
Basically one is in the small.
Small, okay. And how big is this subs, first of all, what's your budget?
A hundred and seven million, Joe, I think.
A hundred and seven million. How much of that goes to the subsidy?
The PAC is about a million dollars, and the golf course is last year a million three million.
So, so two plus one?
Close, almost to three, I think, for my stick.
Out of a hundred and six, okay. So you'd like to see those become self-sufficient?
Self-sufficient.
And what's holding you back? The economy, or the way it's organized, or?
Sure, that's a fair assumption. I mean, you look at the golf course, the golf course, the recreation line too, not very big ops, and I'm diverse, I see that. I don't play baseball, I don't play soccer, that's obvious, I don't do a lot, but that doesn't make any money either. Our parks don't make any money, and hopefully we can have a pool sometime. I doubt that we'll have a pool that'll make money either. It's a matter of, how much do you want to contribute to your community's recreational opportunity, recognizing that you're not going to make a profit off of them. And I think that's part of our obligation as a community, and we heard about using resources and everything else, is to provide these different types of recreational activities to our community, so people can recreate, and I think it might be a little bit unrealistic to, to make it a profit, you know, try to make a profit off of them. Does that say we can't run it better, more efficiently? No, not in any way, shape, or form. But, you know, I think we need to be careful not to bite our nose off these bite our face, and get rid of all the recreational activities, and that'd be the last part of you.
And it's not necessarily getting rid of them, it's reorganizing them or restructuring them so that they serve more of our community, so that the golf course is the viable thing for, you know, residents and self, for everybody as opposed to some other people. So just try and reach out to the main resources as possible, give more pain into some.
Okay, so keep that in mind for opportunities, we're looking for three. Any other weaknesses?
Some of our neighborhoods are needing improvement, not just in infrastructure, but also code enforcement. Some of the conditions that people live in in our four neighborhoods are not really acceptable. And there's also, among some neighborhoods, a feeling of unequal distribution of the city's resources in terms of improvement, code enforcement, public safety.
Okay, so you said a feeling of, does the data back that up?
Yes, just to add to that, I mean, we have, we have a very high rate of substandard housing, and I think Mayor Portman Ramirez alluded to that, that people live in unattainable conditions, and I would contend that the city could do much, much better at finding a way to eliminate that substandard housing, is a solution for that problem.
But let's go to some positives.
I have, really, traffic.
Traffic?
Streets are jammed, and it's hard to get, it takes a long time to get across town.
And traffic is a weakness because of what, the structure of the roads, or is too many cars, or?
We have a number of intersections where it's graded according to how long it takes to get across, and a number of them are C and D.
Oh, the grades?
Yeah. You'll encounter them later.
Okay, opportunities. We're heading towards the, the plan here, the PI. What, some of you mentioned we're going along. Brian, you said something, and I said we can't say that.
We mentioned the, the water, the, the creative ideas, started the, the water recycling and things.
So, what innovation, like more innovation? You said that, didn't you?
I'll take the third one.
Innovative projects. Other opportunities?
I think we have a very unique opportunity right now to attract higher paying jobs, in particular, labor economy jobs, IT tech, biotech, number research.
Why is that?
Well, we not only have a vacant parcel of about 400 acres that is just off the freeway that could be used as a high-tech campus, or an Amgen-like campus, but we have areas all throughout the city that could be used for infill projects and attract, you know, new companies, new employers, there had to be some reselling and things like that to be there.
So, just about that, what would you, you have to resell, where's the money coming from?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of ingredients to attracting those companies, and so it goes along the road of opportunities. We have an opportunity for a regional airport appointment group, that's an idea about how to attract companies here. We have an opportunity to put some schools in place that will provide families that are looking to relocate here, and those employers, high levels of educational opportunities.
So it's new schools?
Um, new, it could be new schools, it could be existing schools, it could be converted into magnet schools.
If I'm just going to say the previous school. Other opportunities?
I think we need to be open to ideas that maybe 10 or 15 years ago we would have said, you're crazy, what we're doing right now. And I'll give you a couple of examples. Gill's onions, who processes onions, obviously. Instead of taking the waste product from the onions, they're now turning it into electricity. And 10 or 15 years ago, you told the farmer, hey, let's take your waste product and do something productive, or they'll turn it back in slow. They'd have probably laughed at you, though. And opportunity to sit down with a gentleman that wants to bring a bio-organic recycling facility down in Oxnard, and take table straps and all the stuff that we would usually send to the lab, do, or whatever, and biodigest it, and spin, and it's true on top of it, but they create its own electrical system. And you can take something like that, one of the issues that we're faced with is a lot of the food processors are having to pay extra fees for what are called PODs, that are discharged into our sewage system. And that costs them money, which in turn costs us money, it doesn't cost them much for us. And this dude, person wants to come in and says, he'll take all that for free, and sort it out, separate it from clean water in the system. So it's less of a, that, our utility infrastructure, it saves the other group of money. Those are the type of things we need to look at, to explore the synergistic relationship we can build up, and encourage people to come in with what we would say are outside-the-box ideas. And 10 years ago, we'd just locked that, and now we're under us, and see what happens.
I put down employees is one of your strengths. What about employee growth, sir? Is there opportunity there to develop the staff?
We have a special need, I think, in many areas throughout the city. One is pulp works. We have a lot of infrastructure projects, that's also opportunities, also that will put people back to work, and so we, I think, have to take a specific look at that, and I know that right now, those positions are, are open and available.
I'm going to use my own quick staff development.
Well, we need to have that culture with our city and family, who's going to be our next leader? And I have to have an opinion with the chief this morning, fire chief, Chief Williams, Chief Williams two, as opposed to Chief Williams one from the Coast Guard, and...
I did not change my name to Woods.
No, but it was, it was refreshing to hear him saying that one of the things he's interested with, with the fire department is looking at five, 10-year succession planning, that when he was upper manager, he thought, who's going to step into those positions and, and do that? And it's, you know, kind of similar to what we want to do in our youth, because those are going to be leaders of tomorrow, of our community. And that also has to go in this forever, and, you know, we can't just walk it off and expect the system to carry on, like we do something proactive, to keep that flowing, to make sure that there's a succession plan. And so, I think even within our own culture internally, the managers here need to be looking at five, 10 years down the road, as to who are going to be the next person to step up. I would love to see, not that we haven't got excellent managers from outside, but I would also love to see a culture of that we can read them and train them here, within our ranks, to step in, with that be a little bit more efficient, I don't know.
I'd like to add what Councilman Bong just said. We have a tremendous amount of creativity and initiative and innovation amongst our staff, and I think one of the opportunities is how do you, how do you continue to manage and run the city, but allow on the other hand for that, that very creative and innovative group of people to, to, to accomplish more. Sometimes I would find in any city, not just Oxnard, it's, it's very restrictive, it's, it's stifling, and I think we're not unique in that case, so we need to find a way, it's an opportunity, how can we harness and how can we capture that, that innovation, that ability of our employees to do much more and much better, and still run the city at the same time, same time.
So I'll put it this way, encourage efficient and effective.
Well, I got a compliment, you got to work on this air condition, because it's something that's cold.
I'm going to keep you awake. You know, a lot of times when I do this exercise, I start with the whole thing about culture, this whole thing with culture, but this is a unique environment, because you're all elected, and it's just a little different for me, because I'm just listening to the tenor of what you're saying, and it doesn't quite flow like you're probably here in corporation, or probably you're here in, I've been a lot of other universities, because you're conscious of, you know, being elected by people, so you have to represent certain viewpoints, which makes frankly, in my view, this kind of exercise tougher, because if I kind of got you in a direction here, that whoever's watching and all that disagree with, the next time we get to do this, you wouldn't be here, it'd be another whole group, you know? So, you, you, I mean, you have to do this, so strategic planning, what I'm saying is, strategic planning for elected officials is more difficult, because you, you're not running a company, you're not running a corporation, you're not even running a nonprofit organization. You're directly, you're bound into, that's why I've been called that stakeholder thing. But we don't need you to be a stakeholder, I can tell you the stakeholders, it's everybody that's out there, you know? It's all the people that work for you, it's all the people you contract with, it's the people that investigate it, it's the people you investigate, it's the students, it's people, you know, all of that is a stakeholder, which makes this process much more difficult, which is why I think when these things, when these kind of planning processes go, it is much easier back from the original company, you get right down into the detail, you know? Well, how much money are we putting for that street over there? Is that, that's something tangible? Well, this, this is very popular, you know, it's kind of a hard thing to do. You're doing very well, by the way.
I'll tend to disagree with you. I think we are CEOs of a hundred million dollar company, so to speak. I mean, the community is our shareholder, our stockholders, whatever you want to call them, and, you know, most of the CEOs of Emron or whatever other companies...
I'll say Emron.
Yeah, yeah. Not Emron, but CEOs are not really providing, and so we end up at a point where what I'm going, it is, that's something important.
Yeah, I would say CEOs are something much more important than elected officials. You know, I mean, I see in my other job, these CEOs are corporate performance, I'm not talking about, you know, Emron's a corrupt example, but companies that just go along and have problems, and yet their CEOs, their pay keeps going up, so. And you're much more vulnerable to direct democracy, which is wonderful.
And, you know, we don't always agree, and I actually think that's a good thing.
Absolutely.
Because we are dissent from dissent, we go to dialogue and try things in progress.
One of my favorite quotes is from Thomas Jefferson, said, "There's a problem in democracy, the solution is more democracy, more voices, not less." A lot of times when we have problems, we see, I see in companies too, the managers just want to pull in and say, well, there's too much [BLEEP]. Generally, that's not the best path. The best path is to can't even handle it.
And you're trying to decide upon a solution that will be the most beneficial to your community, and you have to recognize that regardless of the solution, there's going to be probably some disagreeing on it, or concern, or whatever, and how do you do, or how do you select what you see as the best road for your community to go down, recognize that some of what that happened to them?
And all you can do is do the best, you know, it's a coin, the best you can do, and the difficulty is, we're not talking about this week, we're talking about two years, three years, five. Anything else you want to put, opportunity here?
I know I, I mentioned, and some, just, we do have Old Beach, it's a great, you know, resource. We, you know, what about few coastal areas within the coast of California that we haven't necessarily built out, so I think that's a great opportunity and resource, considering that CSUCI is within our, literally our backyard, so that's a great opportunity. And I know when I did mention, and this is apart from Old Beach, but we do have the golf course, the theater, and the OPAC that we could potentially, there's opportunity to make them self-sustainable, and if not, maybe offer, make some profit, or at least make it self-sustainable.
So, the first strength was coastal, and that's one of the opportunities. So that's one of those things where it could be, you know, on several different places.
Can I add something? I've got a woman that you alluded to, and that's our position close to your university, which is our university, as well as Cal State Grand, as well as UCSB and our community college, which is, also needs a little more attention, a lot more attention, but it's here, and it's a source of many great minds.
And Dr. Kepira, I'd add to that and say that you had asked earlier, why are we in a good position to attract labor economy jobs? The things that are going on at Cal State Channel Islands and UCSB and the higher level, higher learning institutions are magnets for not just magnet schools, but for the entire makeup.
Anything else, a little opportunity? Okay, now this one is, will be brief. Threat, threat is something from the outside. Threat is something from the outside. And I'm gonna do it for you. You only have one threat. Public perception. If the public thinks you're doing a good job, then you are. If they know, then you've got a problem. Your public perception is, all these things I'm hearing from the public speakers, everything else you feel it inside. I mean, a threat is something from the outside that can close you down or bankrupt you, like... Well, you know, I do, when I do this for the university, it's the same thing. It's the system and the state and the federal and, you know, without delivering point. It's all the outsiders that can cause trouble based on good evidence or not, it doesn't make a difference. That's why perception is such a difficult thing to handle. And all organizations do it. I mean, you're happy to be an elected one. But all of them, you know, a university does this, the guy with dry cleaners in the corner does it. If the public starts thinking negatively about that dry cleaners, they're gonna go out of business. It can be based on reality or not. So, does it sound a bit cynical or whatever? Maybe it sounds that way. But you're, you have to manage public perception of your city if you want the city to survive. And of course, the best way to think of it, as you just said, has the added advantage of being true. The best way to manage public perception is to do a good job and to take advantage of those things. So I don't need to gloss over it, but it's not like, oh, we don't have enough money, we don't have this and that and all these people out there or, you know? So it's really public perception for in公的 organizations. So let's talk to the speaker of that big step. And let's talk some more positive things. Okay, so I've got 10 minutes to five here. We're gonna be done at seven, so wait.